Good morning. I'll call the commission meeting in order. Madam Secretary, please call Earl.
Western Commissioner Johnny Williams.
President.
Eastern Commissioner Bradley Jackson.
President.
Designing Commissioner Lynn Moore.
The President should all join me with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Last commission meeting of the month. We're going to start September next week, so August 28th. Today, we have need to approve today's agenda. We've got some meeting minutes that we need to approve. August 19th, regular session. August 21st, regular session. August 21st, closed session. That was RSMO 610.021.17. And that was Auditor Communications. Also, on 26th of August, we had a regular session. We have no financials today to approve. We will keep the agenda exactly in the format that we have it printed. And I need a motion to approve the consent agenda stated.
So moved, second.
Thank you. We've got motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So we, ladies, we've got you guys up. You both can come up here and sit. And soon, we will have some microphones here where we can hear people better. Something, another improvement we're getting ready to make. But glad that you're here today. Show me Christian County.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. We sent over, and it sounds like it was in the packet, an updated just such report. And that was really from our last time we were here through, really, yesterday. We were making changes right up to before we sent it. So we had three months, three and a half months, very productive. We had a lot of activity. The last report we talked about was actually more about groundbreakings and announcements from projects we've been working on for multiple years. So, and we know that that's not going to be the case every single time we come in and talk. We're going to talk about the progress that we're making to be able to have more announcements and more buildings up. So, or more, not just buildings, but the community improvements and the other things that we're working on. So, I think I want to start by sharing our board, towards the end of April, before, after our last meeting, all got together to evaluate our mission and our pillars or our core values of the organization, to make sure that we're all in alignment, we're all in agreement, and that what we're doing is tied to those three pillars. And so, that's really how we formatted this document as well, because with the mission, the pillars were business development, community enhancement, and promoting Christian County. So, we always want to make sure that what we're doing ties to one of those main pillars. And so, business development, I think, is more of the, what people typically think about when they think about economic development. It's more of the business retention, expansion, the projects that we're working, site development, that type of stuff. So, currently, we are working on 36 projects. And again, they're all in different stages. Twelve of those are just leads. Those are people who have ideas. We've connected them with resources. They might not even have a business plan, so they're pretty early on. And then the 24 are more of those, more likely, we feel, to actually come to fruition, I would say, even more soon than some of those leads.
The business owner has actually taken some steps.
Yeah, yeah.
To make their plan a reality if it's an active project.
Yeah. And since then, so basically, in the last three and a half months, we've had 11 new projects, or 11 new things that we've been working on, just in the business development side of it. Additionally, the Highlandville Conferenza Plan, as you guys know, I think we've talked about it before, they have not had funding to get a Conferenza Plan done, so they've never had one done. So, we have, we've actually applied for a grant, and we've received, we've asked for a business to match the funds. And then SimCog has gone on and applied for funding as well. So, they, it sounds like we are going to be able to move forward with that Conferenza Plan. I would, it sounds like more in the next, beginning of it, at least in the next six months, it sounds like.
Which is a good thing.
Yeah. And that's the, the whole point of it, is them to have the, being able to conduct and have their planning and zoning, and then have their plan together. So, that is a big step for the city of Highlandville. We're really excited about that one. And then, I'm going to actually turn it over to Anna, let her share a little bit about some of the legislative work that we've been doing, because that has become a piece of the pie that we're being involved with, understanding and advocating for our community.
So, we took collectively among our team, I believe we took, I think it was four trips to Jefferson City this past session between January and May. We also have, we are regularly involved at the state level on the Public Policy Committee for the Missouri Economic Development Council. And really, we, we really consider our role in that discussion to be an advocate for rural communities, and for projects, and for statewide policies that really benefit our, you know, local and rural communities. We know in Missouri, we have some economic drivers in the state, and we're grateful for them and happy for them. But, you know, not every economic development policy needs to be written about Kansas City and St. Louis. So, we're really trying to be an advocate for our smaller and more rural Missouri communities in that way. Specifically for legislative activities, we, of course, internally, in concert with our board and with community stakeholders, develop our legislative priorities and communicate those to our local elected officials. And then, we also have really been paying attention to the House's Introns Special Committee on Property Tax Reform. That was something that kind of happened simultaneously with the passage of SB3 out of the special session, which, as you all know, had provisions related to property tax that will require, you know, communities to put a general election on the ballot. So, we've really been paying attention to that and doing our best to communicate the fact that, you know, we are a growing community, and we have local services that we want to be sure that continue to remain strong for our local community and for those residents that are here. I would be happy to answer more detailed questions about any of that advocacy work, but I do think we have a bit of the rest of the work to get to. So, happy to answer questions, but I want to pass it back to Kristen first.
Yeah. And so, I guess we'll move on to our second bucket, which is community enhancement. And with this, we, the board really wanted to have this piece of it, because we are transitioning to a C3 organization. And so, we want to be able to go after more foundational grants, some that maybe our cities and our partners aren't able to actually go after. So, we have already went ahead and we've already submitted for a grant, for a $250,000 grant on behalf of the city of Nixa for the Oak Park, trying to get that up and going. We've also applied for a $1,900 grant as well. And then, we were awarded a $30,000 grant for the new Welcome to Nixa signs. So, and I, you guys can see those right now. They're both between Clever and Nixa, and then coming in from Ozark to Nixa as well. And then, the big, it was actually really neat to see last night. I saw the part of the bridge from the Chabot Flyer being police escorted down Highway 65 to get to the location. There were so many people that were part of that, but just for us to be able to be a part of it a little bit was really amazing. And so, part of that work was, whenever the DED came out with their grant requirements, this project actually did not fall into it. So, we had to work with our DED partners and help them understand the, how it could be a tourism asset, and how it can be a big regional draw, and that this could drive tourism. And so, with that, they ended up making legislative changes, so they could, we could apply for this grant. So, this was a, that, it was a $1.179 million grant, and we weren't even going to be able to apply for it. And additionally, because of their knowledge of it, they funded the first, they funded up 25 projects, and they realized our project wasn't funded. And so, they went back through, and they pulled funds from each of those projects to pull funds for this projects, because they saw that throughout the region, we were all really advocating and behind it. So, this was, again, a collective group win, and we're very excited, and that groundbreaking took place this summer as well.
And all this community work is really driven by the fact that we know that businesses make location decisions based on where workers live. We had, there was a community within our county recently that had a business that was interested, you know, really just wanting to know some basic information, you know, kind of exploring this and several other communities, but looking at this area. And in the meeting that they held specifically to get to know that community and to try to talk about it a little more, they almost exclusively just asked about parks and outdoor recreation. That was their main driver, that was top of mind for them in making a location decision where they were going to put their next location, because they, it was such a high priority for them for workforce retention, for workforce attraction. So, when we talk about community enhancement, number one, we want to benefit the community. But number two, how does that tie into business development? Well, businesses are making decisions based on what amenities and what is available for their local workers, and for where they're going to live and not just work. So, that's, that's how that kind of ties into that decision-making process.
Thanks for chafing in on that. That's very good to pull that all together. So, the, our third bucket is promoting Christian County. We, as many of you, or I think all of you guys know, are familiar with our Explorer Christian County big push, with National Geographic kind of being the catalyst for the website, for all the social media, for an events page where we can gather all the information for everything going on just in Christian County. So, and again, it's a free resource, so for all of our businesses to be able to utilize. So, it's really being embraced, too, by our neighboring partners that Branson CBV and Springfield CBV, other CBVs, too. They're, they're, we are getting a lot of positive feedback and a lot of enthusiasm from our tourism partners in the region, saying, hey, this is fantastic, and we can refer the folks to this. This is a resource for us, as well as for the folks who are using the website. So, that's great to hear, too. And I think within the next couple of months, we'll be coming back and talking more about that, because there's, there's just, there's more opportunity for us to capitalize and try to get, bring in funding for marketing and tourism. So, we'll be coming back and talking more about that later. But I, not only did we, we got a $2,500 grant specifically for our marketing efforts recently, but with some of our project work, we were working with Lamar Advertising on a project. And they, they really love what is going on with the Explorer site, and so, they ended up donating billboards to Explorer. And so, we have billboards up that were donated in Nixa, Ozark Republic, Springfield, Joplin, Lebanon, and Southeast Kansas. And that was all free from the sever. So, we brought our little, this is our little sample that they gave us as your first billboard. And they've already, Stevie designed that as well, and so, they're going to provide another one, another, put another one in their rotation as well for us. So, yeah, those are some of the, the big, underneath our buckets. And then, to go back to some of our past projects, we wanted to share that, and in our report, we said three projects that have, they've actually shared the information about their tax revenue. We had calculated that, they calculated, we combined them all to just over $100,000. And this morning, another one of our businesses responded back to us that, so it'd be four businesses, that would be, it was $136,000 based on those four businesses for sales tax generation.
Is that sales tax?
Yeah, sales tax.
That's sales tax specifically to Christian County.
Yeah. So, so those are, those are just some of our quick highlights and updates, and happy to answer any questions.
Very good, ladies. Any questions, comments? I want to make some comments. First of all, just where everyone will know, I, we've already started making some plans. You all certainly will be at the table. It will be a big enough crowd that we'll have to be upstairs in October. Some of us, I've talked to Ms. Amy Dent about this, and Ms. Amber, our HR director, and some of the commissioners, I mean, we've talked some legislators. You guys have got your legislative priorities, and probably our county will be very similar to what your priorities are. There may be something that we tweak a little differently. But we're going to meet in October. Before the guys get busy, there'll be filing bills in December. And we actually think for the county, there may be a very important issue or two, I don't want to go over it today, but just to know that there are things in this county that we need to protect and change and correct and make better for all our citizens. And so, we're going to take a much more heavier emphasis. Commissioner Jackson has gone up to Jefferson City several times and led to talk to the legislators. I have, too. And I'm going to make sure that this next year, as we go to these board meetings, because now he's on a committee and I'm on the state board, that we're, every time we're up there in their city, we're not just going to go to our board meetings and go to committee meetings and things like that. I would encourage both of us to try to make sure we plan ahead, and we go to the Capitol every month that we're up there. Don't, don't be wasting all that time driving back and forth and not seeing somebody who was at the Capitol, because I think there's some important issues for 2026 that we need to watch out for. And I'll just say this, being a legislator for eight years up there, that if we're not involved, and I, thank goodness you guys are involved, we're going to, we've been involved, but we're going to get more involved. If you're not involved, you're going to be on the menu. You're going to be on their menu, and you may not like the outcome. And so, there's lots of things that they can do that cost us money, and we have no recourse. And so, we're going to have to really be, really be careful about that. And I would just say, you know, I do appreciate Show Me Christian County, because the way I see economic development and what we've gone on, a lot of people will say, well, I don't see a lot. I've heard people say that, I don't see a lot. Well, I think I've seen quite a bit. I think that it's kind of like growing the garden. If you don't have the seeds, you're not going to have a garden. Or if you don't have a plant, a pepper plant or tomato plant, you're not going to have a garden. You've got to have the basics, and then you've got to plant it, and then you've got to water it, and then you have to have sun, and you have to have rain, and then you have to weed it. And it doesn't grow in a week's time. It doesn't mature and produce plants and, you know, vegetables in a week's time. It takes time. And unfortunately, for what projects you guys do, it takes time. It takes sometimes more than a year, sometimes two years. And people, I think, need to understand that what the business that you are in and we're in on economic development is a process. It's not a fast process. I wish it was faster, but it's not. And so, we need to be patient about that. But I do think Christian County has improved a lot. The problem that we have in the county, just where everyone knows, is our budget is solely, pretty much primarily the number one driver of sales tax, sales tax. And sales tax is flat in the county for this year. It's maybe a half percent more than it was last year after six, for six months. That's nothing that we can actually basically spend money to do road repair or anything else. It's flat. And when you look at Ms. Amy's budget graph from 2012 for the last 12 years, it's not going down like that. It's not steep. It's very slowly going down. It's sending us a signal that we need to do other things in our county to protect our budget and protect our citizens and our services that we have to provide. And I just want everyone to understand that. I think we have plans to take care of that. But, and we do appreciate, we do appreciate your sales tax programs you've had, because they, I thought they were good. We need to continue it. We never stop talking about buy local. We need to talk about it every day, so where people get it in their mind, if they can, buy local. Because if you buy in Springfield, you're not helping us provide services down here. You're not helping. I mean, you, the people that live here need services. And so, if we don't teach people to buy local, and I understand, that's why economic development's so important, because, because if we have more jobs and better-paying jobs here in this county, we'll retain our people inside the county, and I think wherever they work is where they shop. I don't think they necessarily always shop where they live. I think they shop where they work. And so, we always need to be cognizant of that and work on that. Let me ask you a question, because I think it's vital to our county. So, you all got a grant, and the city got a grant for over $1 million to put that road in, in front of the Chevrolet dealership going all the way down to Creative Audio. So, when is that road going to start?
So, they, that process is, it's a long one, again. So, that, it is moving along, I think, as quickly as any of these projects typically do move along. But they had to go through the bid process to secure the engineering firm that was going to do this whole process. And now, they have gone through that, they've, you know, selected the engineering firm. Now, the engineering firm is turning around and leading the process on the further, like, bids and everything they have to be put out there. So, a lot of what you're going to see for probably the next year, hopefully, we're hoping to move faster than that, but is going to be procurement, design, planning, environmental, I mean, the studies that need to be done in order to absolutely determine, you know, we did some preliminary engineering to say, here's where we think the track of the road is going to go. Now that we've received the funding, it's time to really dig in there and make sure that that's absolutely correct. So, we're hoping for actual construction before the end of next year, but it's, there's still quite a few steps in the process between now and then. But progress is being made. I mean, every, all the boxes that need to get checked are being checked. It's just not, you know, something that the public can easily look at and say, oh, this is great, this is happening. So, that's yet another.
Yeah. So, Ms. Anna, I appreciate that. So, we're, what people need to realize, and I need to realize that, too. So, because one of the reasons why I'm so excited about that, and I know it's, it's a few years away, is the fact that you've still got the grant money. So, you know, we've got the grant money, and so, we're not going to lose that grant money. There's not a time limit on that. But I know that the idea is, the idea is still that the owner of Creative Audio, we've got the land, he's got the land behind there. And the idea that I've always heard, so you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we were going to put three or four other businesses in, back there, and kind of have a, kind of a high-tech park-type thing with businesses. And these jobs are going to be high-paying, a lot of high-paying jobs, which, when you talk to, when you talk to moms, moms and grandparents that live in Christian County, you know what their number one thing they want? They, they want to keep their kids in Christian County instead of going off someplace and finding a job somewhere else. That's what they really want. So, our goal for the future, I think, if we want to continue to make Christian County the best place in the state, is to be able to provide jobs. I put a lot of pressure on you guys, because the chambers don't do this anymore. People need to realize the chambers are very important, but their function is not what it was in the 70s days when I was a chamber member for all these chambers out there. That's not their function anymore. People used to go to the chamber and want to know everything about Ozark or Nixa when they, when they traveled through the highway. But that's not really what the chambers do, per se, anymore. And they don't help, they help bring business in. I know you work with them, but you guys, it's on your shoulders more than it is the chambers' shoulders. And so, we've got to try to, as we're doing like the big development over at Nixa, the 190-acre development, we have to, we have to make sure that we are creating new jobs and better-paying jobs for this county. And so, I know that you'll continue to do that, but I just wanted to ask you about that project, because I've had people ask me from time to time, well, what's going on? I heard we're going to have a road, we're going to have businesses out there, and it's not there yet.
Then, we, so, the road project with the grant that we received, Anna took the lead on, on writing that, the co-applicant, there was a requirement to receive those funds to create 100 jobs, and it has to be above the average county wage. So, from this, for that funding, we know that there will be 100 jobs created.
At least.
At least. But that is, that is, that's what has been communicated, that is what we've, we've been really, we're, we're able to really talk about more is, is that part of it. So, there will be more announcements and discussions later on about that property and that full development, along with 190, you mentioned, those are, those are not fully designed and available for more information at this time.
Sure, no, not yet. And I, I have to be careful, because I get excited about something positive happening in our county. And so, I probably bug you sometimes, but I just want to make sure that, always in the back of our mind, we need to be thinking about creating, not just bringing businesses to town, but we need to create jobs, jobs, okay?
There is.
And I think that's going to help our county so much better.
We have, I will even say, I mean, we have received, you know, leads or project requests or things like that in the past. And I'm, I'm not talking about people who contact us directly, but you know, maybe from the state level, a lead will come down. And, you know, and this is occasional, but it might be, you know, it's, all of it's confidential. I mean, you never know who the business is, you know, or exactly, typically, you don't really know much about the business at all. You just know, you know, they need this many acres, and they need to have this on it, and X, Y. But you can kind of read, and you can kind of tell sometimes. And there, there have been some, I mean, maybe two, maybe two or three times, not often, but there've been some leads that we've received where we've thought, you know, for the wage that they are offering, this is not necessarily going to be an improvement to the county. There are some, you know, projects out there that really what they're going to do is just kind of dilute the workforce that we already have, instead of building up the workforce that we already have. So, there have been some leads that we have, that we've passed on.
Right.
Even though we're not, we're not going to submit for this, even though maybe, you know, we actually might have a piece of property or what have you that would fit. So, that's the, not just the number of jobs, but the quality of jobs is a really key factor, and that's something that we're, we're looking at all the time, absolutely.
All right. Very good. Any other comments, questions? I appreciate you all being here. You're welcome anytime to give us updates and things like that. We'll be discussing your budget requirement and things like this. And so, we appreciate everything you've done. I just know, people need to know, we're live on YouTube. I'm so glad that we are, because people need to hear things like this. What you do is complicated. What you do is not easy. It takes time. And, and on the other hand, the sooner we get more positive things going in the county, the better it is for all of us. And... And so I appreciate it. I appreciate it. I think we would not be where we are today without showing Christian County. Okay?
I'm going to quote you on that one.
Okay. You can quote me. I think people may disagree with me, but I actually think that you guys have done positive things. And I do appreciate it, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. We are to the next item. We've got Ms. Kim. She's going to come up, purchasing manager. And we've got some things to talk about.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
So, what's the person we have? Is that her company? Assessment list. Okay, assessment, okay. So this is, so we bid out ITV 2025-7 Assessment List Printing Processing and Mailing and Value Change Notices. This, again, this is what the assessor does every year. And just as a reminder, valued change notices are on a cycle where every odd-numbered year, the assessor is required to assess all real property and provide notices to those property owners whose properties change in value. In the even-numbered years, the assessor only sends notices to people with new builds, additions, et cetera. We had on the evaluation kit, Minnie, myself, Assessor Gray, Assessor Lex Burns, Sandy Lyles. We received three proposals. They were data integrators, Edward J. Rice, and input technology. Input technology was the lowest and best overall provider, and that is who we were recommending. So we ask for your vote on this.
And what was the cost on that?
And this one, well, it's all estimated. We send out 46,000 notices a year. Now, I'm taking the tax.
Personal property assessments.
I'm sorry?
The personal property assessment lists we send out every year. And then every two years we'll send out. It depends on what the market does. We can send out up to 30,000 reassess, or change in value notices every couple of years. But on a new construction year, we only have to send out maybe 1,500 or 2,000. So it varies. So those estimates on the bid.
And this is the 2025-7, is that correct? I was looking at.
Yes. And this is right now, or again, it's all estimating, but around $59,805. The one that we had previously was listed at $65,331. So we saved quite a bit going through...
Is that, Ms. Kim, is that with, you know, I hear that postage rates are going to go up in '26. Is that with maybe a projection of it going up or do we know?
A lot of them get better postage rates because of the volume that they do.
Then what?
So, yes. In fact, this one gave us postage rate of .58 cents.
Okay.
And they are out of St. Louis. They had excellent references.
Okay, very good. Any comments, questions? If not, I need a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve 2025-7.
Okay, thank you. Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, if asked, thank you very much. Next, next item.
So this one is for ITV 2024-12, which we bid out last year. So this is the first renewal. It's for Ozark Printing. It's for graphics provided by the Christian County Sheriff's Office, and they applied until their county vehicles. They decided that they would keep the pricing the same and won't raise it. So we ask, and the sheriff is fine with this, so we recommend that you approve the renewal for the contract for Ozark Printing for an additional year.
Okay. And we don't know what the cost of that is.
Oh, yes, oh, yes. I'm going to my head. I'm taking just a minute. But it's, again, what he bid out is, there was about four different... Again, this was last year. But what we bid out was for a black Tahoe, a black Charger, a black Durango, a white Tahoe, a white Charger, a white Silverado, a white Durango. And all of these have all different kinds of things. Stars on the doors, the American flag, et cetera, et cetera. And so, and they were the lowest bid last year. So, I mean, I can go through those prices if you want.
No, that's fine. That's fine, that's fine. Okay, any other comments, questions? Need a motion to approve that bid?
Motion to approve 2024-12.
Okay, thank you. Got a motion, and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Thanks, Ms. Kim.
Thank you.
Good job, as always. Okay, next item on the agenda is commission communications. I think that Ms. Amber, our resource, our HR director, has communication about our grand opening of our clinic employee clinic.
I just wanted to remind everybody that our grand opening is next Wednesday. It's open house between 8:00 and noon. And the ribbon cutting will be right at noon. So I'd like for as many people as possible to be there. I went around to talk to, I think I got to nearly every office last week to answer all questions that employees had, to make sure that they were comfortable and understood what the clinic had to offer them. And I think those went well. And we have had it utilized already. And I only know that because the employee called me, not because Carrie texted me. But I'm excited for the open house and I hope everybody...
Very, very good. Any comments or questions? I would just say this, we all need to be there, as many elected officials. I know it's hard for the staff, but anybody that could get over there sometime between the times it opens and closes for the open house, I think we should make every attempt to be there. And I will be working with Ms. Amber and Ms. Kim. We actually, I think it was two years ago, Ms. Kim and the county won a state award. And Ms. Kim got to go up on the stage and talk about something that our county had done that was recognized as a very innovative idea and had to do with electronic bidding and things like this. This year, I was just trying to figure out, what is our county doing that's different and better than other counties? And I think I got it figured out that we, one thing that we've got going on right now is, are we the first county to have an employee health clinic? Am I right? Ms. Amber, do you know?
Are you meaning in the state of Missouri?
Uh-huh.
I have to research that.
Well, I was told, so we need to check that out because I had Miss Carrie, when she comes to health every afternoon, I had her make me some, make copies of applications because I was going to enter us. I'm not going to fill it out myself. I'll let other people help. But we, I think that the reason why we're doing a health clinic in Christian County for our employees is, I think all of us agree that our employees are our number one asset. Without our employees, it doesn't matter what kind of buildings, what kind of equipment. It doesn't matter anything if we don't have very good employees. So we want to keep our employees healthy. And one thing I've learned since 2020 is, for whatever reason, we have employees that don't even have a family physician. And I would just always think to myself that every family needs a family physician. Certainly, our employees need a family physician. And the copays that we have to pay because of our insurance, we pay 100% of our insurance premium for our employees, so they have no cost. Except they do have a cost. Every time they go to any doctor, there's a copay. And the copays get extremely high with urgent care and ER, even way higher. But even a family practice doctor, starting down at the bottom, they are still expensive. And so there's no copay for our county employees. And there's a lot of other things that they can do. They have the help 24 hours a day via telephone, via computer. They can visit with a doctor and healthcare provider. There's a lot of wellness things, disease management with diabetes and blood pressure and other issues. So I foresee that our county employees will start being healthier. And if they're healthier, we'll have less costs. They'll have less costs. The county will have less costs. We're hoping that that helps us when we renew our health insurance, which is extremely expensive and going up very high every year. So that's why we're doing this clinic. It's the first of many buildings that will be put over there at the campus, 40-acre campus. So now we'll soon be starting to plan what we're going to put next in the extra space that we have built. So I think that we need to certainly promote that. So maintainers?
I concur. AI just told me that Christian County is opening, and I'm really hoping, but it doesn't...
I don't think. The other day, when I talked to Steve Hobbs, the CEO of MAC, Missouri Association of Counties, he did not think. And so we need to verify that.
I think that they have partnerships. I think other counties have partnerships with hospitals or occupational health clinics.
Yeah, but this is our own...
I know. I'd have to research to say that definitively, but I don't...
Well, there's two things. We'll talk about the other later, too. But I, as we all, all the commissioners and other elected officials will be at the November MAC meeting. That's our annual meeting, big meeting. And there'll be all kinds of people there. And I want to try to claim an award or two for Christian County. But we're the best county, so I need to make sure that we do that. Any announcements that you guys have? Okay, I've got a couple more announcements. I want to make sure that we all realize that next Monday is Labor Day. It sneaks up on you. And so all county offices are closed, courthouse, everybody's closed. We'll be back Tuesday at 8:00 a.m. Obviously, we thank the Sheriff's Department and all the people that are working because someone in their departments are going to be keeping us safe while we're all enjoying the holiday. The other thing I want to announce is, and this is new, this is a brand-new topic that we're going to, I think, really benefit the county, benefit citizens, benefit elected officials, benefit staff. I'm going to start next Tuesday having commission regular office hours on Tuesdays from 9:00 to 12:00. Three hours a week, 9:00 to 12:00 on Tuesdays. That will be after we know what the agenda is. Every Monday at noon, we will have time to know what the agenda is, go over all the things. And I appreciate you guys got the information to us early. We're trying to make sure that everybody that's on the agenda gets information to us early where we can send it out. We actually don't just want it for us to study and read and know ahead of time. We actually want it for the public because we send out our notices to the public about commission meetings. We would love for them to also be able to read what we're going to discuss and talk about. And so that way, they'll be more educated, too. So this is a kind of a combination between helping the public understand and us commissioners understand. There'll be no votes and no decisions made between that time. I would envision, this is what I envision in talking to some other groups of other counties. I would envision that we will start having citizens come and want to talk to the three of us together. And we'll start to get an agenda on that, too. But we, ahead of time. But I envision that sometimes they will talk to all three of us at one time, but we'll be taking no decisions. We'll be listening and taking notes. We'll be interacting. But I also think that sometimes they'll be wanting to talk to one of us and maybe not the three of us. I think that when there's not a citizen here or an elected official here, I think the three of us can talk about things. We will be talking about the Show Me Christian County budget next Tuesday. We'll be talking about the juvenile budget, the courts budget. And we've got a myriad of things that we can talk about that we can't talk about during the week. I can't go to either one of you guys to your office and ask you what you think. I can't ask you, I can't learn anything from you, and you can't learn anything from me. We just can't discuss things unless we announce it to the public. We can't break the sunshine laws, and we're not going to. So we're going to do this, and I bet you our communications will be much better and will be much more productive, more ready to go on Thursday on commission meetings. And the public will benefit. So we're going to try it for a while and see how it works. And I have a feeling it will grow and be a very positive thing. So that's next Tuesday. We understand if there's a commissioner that's got a doctor's appointment or got something else, there may be a time. There may be a time when you're not there either the whole day or part of the day. But we're going to try. I'm asking everyone to do their best in blocking off that time from 9:00 to 12:00 on Tuesdays that we can interact with each other and the public. So those are my two announcements. We'll have our regular commission meeting next Thursday after the Tuesday workday. Any comments or questions on that?
I must say, I was looking at that. But Carrie just texted me that we do have to do food truck out Friday today, and they're offering 25% off to county employees.
Okay, so we have a food truck out today? And what did you say, a discount?
25% off for county employees today.
Oh, really? Okay. Well, I would encourage because all of a sudden, we're starting to get... Miss Carrie was telling me, and she, we get her loaned out approximately an hour a day from HR, and she comes over and helps the commission and works with Mark and me. I would, she's told me that we're all of a sudden starting to get more inquiries.
She has been helping, so she's been working on that.
Yeah, well, yeah. I would give her all the credit. And so I think this is awesome when we get more food trucks. And where we have a different selection, we're not getting the same thing every time that they come. Not knocking any food truck, but just saying we, better selections, I think, will be better. And I would try to patronize the food trucks if you can. Winter will be here, and it'll be nice to be able to have a food truck every once in a while where you don't have to get it in your car and drive through bad weather and try to get back in 30 minutes. It's pretty impossible. So we have a 30-minute lunch break. So food trucks, I think, are important in your health and local businesses because we've been very careful in trying to make sure that the food trucks are not from another county. They're from our county. And so we're helping our people. So, good, I'm glad you said that. Okay, any other comments or questions? If not?
No.
Hold on.
You have a closed session, so...
Yeah. Okay, we're just going to, I'm sorry, that's right. We're going to go into recess now because we do have a closed session.